Okay, we're running a little late again today, but just time I'm gonna call them to meet the orders, it's eleven fourteen. We'll get started like I said, everybody stand and I'll leave a word for everyone. And you hear me, Father, again, we just thank you for another day of life that you give us here, Lord, just thank you for a beautiful day. We just pray to just continue to bless your county, bless the ones that are not just in this county, but every county that want to be assistance to us. And we just pray for the ones that are still in tenth and don't have any place to go, we just pray that everything will just kind of speed up and help with these travel trailers and homes that FEMA and the state trying to put together. Again, we just thank you for life itself, we just thank you for so many blessings that have flowed upon us and just help us to be good towards and leaders of the county, dear women and their good prayers and Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the reason we had to have a special meeting today too is just actually a couple things that we didn't have on a previous meeting that has to be taken care of. Even some of this language we got on some of these things, we're gonna change when they're gonna get there. But the first thing is the consideration approval of a regular meeting June twenty eighth, twenty two, and then also approve the contract with Compass.
Yeah, and to explain why that's relative is because the minutes of June twenty eighth is the month where we did talk about most of our ARPA funding expenditures, like where we're gonna allocate our money. And Compass is the leading company right now in the state handling all the ARPA funds. There's a packet in, like I said, behind your agenda, it's got everything listed in there, they have in-house lawyers, actually one of their representatives on the ARPA board, so they have everything streamlined. So if we did it ourselves, there's a bunch of those, Compass bunch has it down to the science, submitting and getting it approved and money paid back.
And then that's how, and with Compass being the one doing this, and I don't have to tell y'all how strict FEMA guidelines are and federal money is, but we just need to make sure whatever we do is event and filed a way to be filed, so that's why we approved, asked to be approved for the contract with Compass. Just have to have a motion.
Shouldn't that read just regular meeting minutes?
How did you hear it, Donnie?
Shouldn't the motion read minutes, if the meeting goes, or add the word minutes, so that's what we're looking on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry, it's just meeting. Yeah. No. So did Donnie make the motion?
Royal.
Royal, who else say it? Donnie Bush?
Right.
Royal, Craig Moore?
Uh.
Your last take?
Uh.
Oh, Jim Carrey. Uh, consideration approval, payment of credit card data.
I'll read off some of that real quick. Jeff really hasn't had much action. On mine, I gave it to Chris when the disaster first got started, and there were some charges we had to, the command served at Walmart, and there were some things we had to buy, whether it be tents or printers or whatever. So I had two hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-five cents, eighty-four dollars, fifty-five cents, a hundred and thirty-one dollars, ninety-four cents off Walmart. Then we used the card to buy diesel at Addix Food Mart there, the Addix dot com, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, seventeen cents. I can give y'all a copy if you don't like grabbing one out of it.
And then when he says that, I guess everybody know there were about fifty more diesel tanks, I guess it had a hundred, the drain pipe underneath that collapsed and they had four tanks instead of some, we come and set up. And I know we got some credit card, but we've also got some invoices that probably be.
Yeah, there's, we already paid.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That might be okay.
Yeah, this is all listed in here, if you look in your package, it's all in there. The vehicle payment, tractor supply, hundred sixty-nine, ninety-nine, and thirty-nine, ninety-eight, that's some more stuff, that's what we bought the gates and stuff, lots of stuff. There's our payments, interest charges, and the rest of mine is mostly travel charges. Two thirteen fifty-seven for golf house, six seventy-seven oh seven for golf house, some stuff for the jailer, they had gone on a trip to get a prisoner, purchased some food and expenditures on that. That tractor supply cannot remember up top of it.
Which one?
Uh, three sixty-four eighty-nine. I've got a receipt, I just can't hear what it was. That's all for mine, I said mostly it is either during the, during the actual flooding event, stuff we had to have, or travel charges. On Jeff's card, a sting payment, a bond payment, fuel payments for the corner.
Yeah, I took my credit card and went and paid it.
For the corner, and that's all his stuff, like I said, it's pretty simple.
So we have a motion to pay credit card payment?
You guys have one?
Yeah. Nope. That's the, she not brought in yet, just right now.
You should have a copy.
But not the total overall. Mine will be close to, let me think. I'll top it in. Mine will be close to thirty-seven hundred dollars, actually, oh, I forgot, Chris just got back, so it's not showing on the statement, Chris used my credit card to go to his conference in Lowell, so that's another three hundred and seventy dollars for travel, for his room. So mine will be around at, I'd say thirty-two hundred dollars, and Jeff should only be like, no, you're like four or five hundred dollars. Jeff's only four or five hundred, but I can't, I can get you the, before you leave, I can get you right now.
But that, maybe you gotta watch out everyone online, except for Chris and everybody. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
You second it?
Yeah.
Royal, who else? Craig Moore?
Uh.
James Moore?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Jim Carrey? Consideration approval of bid for disaster recovery and mitigation service. How many, how many?
Just one. He just got one for each one of them.
In the first meeting, tell me, synergy, I just, how do we say it? And they're the only ones that got a bid on it, I'll just pass this around, well, I can read off them. Subject matter, if purchase SME is two twenty-five in there, project manager, one sixty-five in there, assistant project manager, one fifty-five in there, senior grant specialist, a hundred and thirty dollars in there, damage expectancy adjustment, one thirty-seven in there, EOC is forty, one thirty-five in there, cost estimate is one thirty-five in there, project cost specialist, one twenty-five in there, data storage website manager, one twenty in there, GIS specialist is one fifteen in there, data support assistant, administration assistant is forty-five, grid monitor is forty in there, data manager, seventy-five in there, debris supervisor, seventy-five dollars in there, GIS specialist eighty-five, and QA is that's QC, specialists in debris, they have two dollars. And it also says fifty dollars in there for overtime, above forty hours a week, and then mileage and related activity would be billed as a pass group GSA rate, and they were, what did I read? But anyway, it'd be fifty dollars, plus the mileage, it says all grant managers constantly with, with those supporting document, planning with FEMA, P A manager costs, interim policy F P, one on four, national eleven, national two, and it's all covered at a hundred percent of federal cost shares. What this is, it's gonna be completely a one hundred percent reimbursement of that. So do we have a motion to go ahead and award the disaster recovery, just any interview? And just tell me when we got on the.
That's all, that bit on it.
So does anybody wanna go ahead and make a motion to award any interview just for disaster recovery?
Motion. Second.
Do we have, Donnie Bush say? Ray Moore?
Uh.
James Moore?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Royal?
Uh.
Uh, the next one is consideration to the approval of bid for twenty twenty-three Chevy Suburban for, for the corner office. This is the stuff that we've already put together, but then they keep back and we're just such a shortage, it's hard to get a bid.
Yeah.
Bid on, on the price of, instead of, go ahead.
There's only one Chevy dealership that's on state bid contract, that's Bockham in Lowell, and the demand for vehicles is ridiculous. They said that last year they were only given twenty Suburbans, the whole year, and they had a request for fifty-three, we were one of the fifty-three, we did not get one. I called them back, I said, well, next year's lots coming up, and he said, you're still below the, below the threshold, you will not get one till next year. So I contacted the rural development USDA and got approval to pull out of the state bid and just bid it out locally, anybody that could give me a twenty twenty-three, and we did, we had one quote from Tim Shortz in Agar. So I'm not sure what to do, but it's all called me out.
So instead of being a state bid, it pretty much.
It's, right, if they had to follow state, yeah.
Not, not as true as at the court too, but even the trail authorities, they started, they waited and waited and waited to get, they got a bid, but they couldn't get the bid. So, and actually, I don't know about this one, but when they found two trucks, they were actually willing to win under state, state price, but this one would be.
State bid price, do you know what that was, state bid price is about at fifty-four thousand dollars for a twenty twenty-three Suburban, for one round.
What'd you say, around fifty-four, Charlie? This one here is fifty-five thousand, a hundred and ninety-five dollars, so it's probably a thousand dollar high.
But they could get it.
This could have something wrong with that.
Next month and not next year.
And this will probably have some extra that my place, rural, rural map, I mean, I don't know what this has got.
They can't agree, he said, when I first contacted him, he sent me a, a kind of a, what he did.
And for one thing, this has got a rear vision camera, part of the state, Suburban, probably will have a rear, that's just my opinion, but, and it's got keyless entry, I don't know that a state one will have a keyless entry. It probably, but I guarantee if you took this and added all that to a state price, it, this probably will be a dollar or two cheaper or higher.
But I mean, it's, yeah, that's probably, I mean, this grant, when I pulled it out, it started in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And it filed in twenty twenty-one.
It's been a couple years.
And yeah, it's, every year, COVID got it the first time, we had a bid from somewhere else, COVID got it, and then that group lost their state bid pricing, so then we had to go to Bockham, and it's been that.
But it has gotten here through plus tax and license, but we won't have to pay taxes, you know, that'll come off, so if that's including taxes, it's gonna be, it's a lift.
I'm sure this way it goes a lot faster and.
Well, it's a good one, I mean, you get one this one. So do we have a motion to go ahead and prove, awarding bid to Tim, what's your Tim Shortz?
Shortz.
Okay, we want to read this Tim Shortz, that's for fifty-five thousand, a hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Motion.
James Moore? Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Royal?
Uh.
Craig Moore?
Uh.
James Moore?
Uh.
Jim Carrey?
Okay, instead of, I know it says consideration approval of the first reading, the ordinance to adopt the Bretham County Occupational Tax, establish a date for the second reading. Really what we got, we need to talk about this a little bit. I don't know what I really think, or maybe I think, or thought that's what Donnie meant, I don't know, when he, when this first came about, about taking occupational tax on him. I don't know if we got hung up that he was wanting to take it off of Bretham County Residence, and then he kind of missed terms to it, or maybe we all, but anyway, you all have done a first reading and a second reading to remove the occupational tax. At this time, I think we just need to, we're branding hand here, I know he's talked to you, right, Donnie, and he's talked to Bill, this one bit, why don't we just talk about some options to go ahead and put an ordinance together and let Brandon put that together and just look at it instead of making a motion to go ahead and have a first reading? Because we got the same, this is the same ordinance that was passed back in oh three when it was brought up, and the dates don't come together, it's got different language that I know needs to be changed. But would you want to allow us to put an ordinance together and completely exempt the Bretham County workers from it? Or would you just wanna put, get, get an order put together and look at it before we even bring it up in a meeting to discuss, to see if we got things that, I mean, we could have a meeting, but y'all had to get the ordinance and look at it and say, you know, this is okay, but that's not okay, and, and.
Order balance, that conversation I had with Brandon is that you, you could probably do that, but it wouldn't hold up in court, you can't just pick and choose who works in the county.
Yeah, he said it would have to be something like just straight across the table.
Right.
So instead of, instead of us going ahead and doing a first reading and saying, well, we're gonna change the date of July one, twenty twenty, I just think we need to put an ordinance together and everybody look at it and see how you feel toward it.
Did you do net profit?
Yeah.
And not girl's places?
Yeah.
So not tax people, but tax companies?
I really didn't realize, I really didn't realize the day that we actually have, too, I do know people have to get an occupational license, and I still think they'd have to do that, even though we don't have an occupational. No, don't even have to get a business license.
No, it's, that was a question that came up a bunch of times real quick, I gotta hold it, I gotta hold it.
And like I say, this is the first time I think we've laid, had these side by side look at it.
Well, if, if you, if you read through it, it's very generic, but you do it, that is the ordinance that makes you have occupational license, so I got it with Matt and Rich, and they said.
So should this just be one really, or did you have one with that?
The ones you got there are net profit, gross, gross receipts, gross receipts is the per person, and the net profits is the per company.
So instead, instead of trying to bring anything up, y'all didn't want us to put a word together, y'all get a copy of it, to look at it and give Brandon, and kind of would think that, but Donnie did bring something up that Brandon told me, he said, he thought it would have to be something across the table, you know, maybe we can't say all except the county employees, and it'd be, it'd be, be legal, is that the way you understood it, Donnie?
He just told me that, like I said, we could, we could pass whatever ordinance that we voted on and it's approved, but what he got down, legality of everything, you can't, you can't do it, it's gotta be all or nothing, that's the way I understood it.
So you just wanna let me and Matt kind of work on this ordinance, put together, give it to Brandon, look at, and then see what changes they think have to be made, and y'all look at it before, then go, meet, come up at ten in the month. You wanna do that instead of going ahead and trying to adopt the ordinance today or even a first reading, you think?
Yeah, I'll need to be able to have a first reading today.
The original ordinance, like I'm saying, is, it's picked in July first, so whatever money's been.
Now, that's a resolution that you passed, I mean, that's in effect, because I, you know, last year, Brandon, I asked you all to consider rescinding?
You can't.
But you can't, we have to start if we put it back on this, just like we started it, never had one started it all over. But again, I think we need to look at what we're losing here with all these contractors and, I mean, we should probably end up adding up to more than what our occupational tax even generated.
I had, so I talked to several people, and they said they, they remember when the tax went on, it's, it's like, you know, they said that, that it was like, you know, temporary thing, but we know how, how taxes work, once it starts, it's over.
Yeah, and I think it started in oh three, I, I could've told you the exact date till I.
Ninety-six.
Huh?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. Whatever I read here could've been a change in it in order to change it, oh, three. But instead of voting on anything or even discussing anything, why don't we just wait and put something together, let Brandon look at, let y'all look at, and see if it's something that y'all willing to look at and locate?
Like, if you have your according to actual ordinance, I got a copy, it's August fifteenth, nineteen ninety-six.
And again, that was the first time I seen this, and I haven't took time to go through it, and look at it.
My jambo drum, you're good.
What?
When you mad. It was.
Okay, so let's just go, let's just go ahead and, and get something together and let y'all look at it, see if it's something that y'all wanna adopt and do a second reading on. Do we, do we need, we don't, I don't think we need to make a motion on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Okay, next thing on the list, consideration approval of claim claims, and also to pay the claim in the resolution, twenty twenty-two, oh nine, oh eight, and this is to actually get the money to be able to pay. We need to do, we need to do the resolution to get the money to pay the claim that we got, and I know I told y'all that we were setting a line of credit up for CAO, and we're still doing that, but CAO can't send any county up right now on line credit because FEMA hasn't given them the letter stating that they would be responsible for a hundred percent, so. But this here, this resolution is to do a three hundred thousand dollar in-house transfer from CAO to Bretham County Physical Court. This three hundred will be completely reimbursed back because it's, this fall on each a hundred percent of the thirty days of the claims. So we do have, do we have a motion to pay the claim and pass the resolution twenty twenty-two, oh nine, oh eight, to get the three hundred thousand from CAO to pay the claims?
Motion, second.
Okay, Ray Moore made a motion, Gerald second.
So it's asking through, planning, you know, CAO put it, like.
They can't give us a line of credit yet, yet, because they're waiting on a letter from FEMA, FEMA to guarantee that they will reimburse them back for the three million dollar line of credit they allowed us to have during this disaster. We will get it, but, we will get it, but, but when they do it.
But they have, you know, CAO's huge anyway, so this is something they offer, not just in emergency situations, like, they offer a line of credit.
Yeah.
And the maximum is three hundred thousand, and that's what they're offering us right now until we can get three million cleared out.
This is pretty much an in-house transfer from CAO with Bretham, and then we get paid for our FEMA job registered around, we just borrowed money, they may be, they may be interested in it, he didn't say.
I didn't see one in.
And compensation, it wasn't on that resolution either.
How long would it process from topic?
There ain't no way that they can, since the way they got me, I gotta tell you that.
I don't think so, I think that's the problem, and that's why I said, when they do, because it ain't something they gonna send a letter and say, hey, we're guaranteed, we're gonna pay this. They have to know what that three million line of credit is for, for each county out soon.
So the job is paid for, but you said, how long is it like, I know you can't say like, city time, but how long do you take for FEMA to reimburse the job as they can prove?
Man, I hope it's pretty quick, because we, we've been there, we had on our first time in a row.
Last year's disaster, which was March twenty-one, we just now got the deposit, uh, two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, in August.
That, that's what I'm saying, by big court meeting, if something ain't, Gil, we ain't got a lot of credit, Gil probably has to look at you before it's a debate.
You can get it pretty quickly, but that's, you have to wait for them to come to sound inspections, do the obligations, all that.
And then again, this is probably something other, I mean, hindsight's always twenty twenty, but I think we need to set a line of credit up, because I do know I've been in meetings where Prairie County set up a billion dollar line of credit about five years ago, and they just leave it open, if something happened and they needed it there, and then they reimbursed it back, but.
Another thing, Judge, I'm doing that P four on four four two eight, when that, we get that letter back?
We get it, we get it.
Whatever money's in that account, you can transfer it easy.
Yeah, that's a challenge that we're reading.
But I, I recognize your point about Prairie County, I don't know if we need a bid, but we will, we will need something pretty soon.
I'm just saying, they already had a lot of credit up for a billion dollar.
That's it, we need to figure out something, be a, a loaner, a line of credit or something somewhere, because I'm about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now that I probably can't pay. We can prove it, that's why I was meeting last time, you said approve the invoices of partnership funds, you know, we're already that much deep, and I mean, just driving every county, I know we're getting a bunch more. I mean, we're gonna get a couple hundred thousand more dollars worth of bills, but not revenue, so.
It's because we've kind of brought a lot of the contract work to a halt, still some work that we need to get accomplished.
But like I said, still, when, when it all comes, when all of those sales, on my desk, they're probably gonna be, right now, there's one point one billion dollars of bills and nine hundred thousand dollars of cash, you know, so that's all already in the hole.
We're two hundred thousand.
Right, it's just gonna get worse.
Now, the debt court being coming up.
It's just gonna get worse because the first time, because CRA is the biggest.
You know, and maybe, I know y'all made a motion, but maybe we need to amend this motion.
We got twenty-nine.
And also, also implore this to go ahead and.
I would wait till next meeting.
Do you wait till?
We can hold off that, that way we know we're just waiting.
You need to pinpoint exactly how long we could have this line of credit, if we borrow three million dollars, and it takes a year and a half to get reimbursed, I mean, and then if they call them their credit, we were, we're destroyed. I mean, you gotta.
The, the best thing can hap, best thing can happen is CAO go ahead and award us a three million dollar line of credit.
Yeah, but for how long, I mean, they, what I'm saying is, we don't wanna get caught with, like Matthew said, with not the red to cover it, we gotta, someone needs to know, how long is this line of credit set up for?
They, they can, they can.
That's why. That's why I'm saying, that's why I say wait till, wait till the next meeting, let's just go ahead, if you want me to do that, that's what I'm asking you, it's nothing important, but you know, something that, you want me to bring that for you all next time, and get all the word and purpose and the rights, and the year, and get all that stuff for you. That way, because we need a game plan, make this work.
So instead of making a motion, you want to wait till the next?
Next meeting, it's gonna get discovered, and then next meeting, I'll bring it up, I'll, I'll contact different people and we'll get, we'll have to keep that line somewhere.
Well, we talked about what three hundred thousand was set to make first go around.
Yeah, but that, from day one to day two, I thought that'd be one, they had said three, and I called it the next day, said, can you make it five, so, I mean.
And that's actually what I asked CAO, could they do five hundred thousand, we said, we could do three hundred thousand in-house.
Do we need to amend the motion to say when the funds come to battle that we've already approved?
No, these are, these are small, these are just ones that run my desk, and I've got back, and I forgot, so hopefully getting those off, getting off my desk, but.
Well, I'm not just saying. Some stuff turned in after the day of meeting.
All the stuff you approved and paid, they may come to us, it's not really, you know, so it's.
We're just talking in our Bible, we're talking right now, we, I think we should, that you get it all together.
Yeah, instead of making a motion, fully wait your head court and see where it.
So I would say, I prefer to pay the invoices, just what they've already said in motion, we just vote on it, the resolution passed, all that, so just vote on that, and the next meeting, I'll bring you a bunch of findings.
And what I'm saying is.
Resolution as far as the motion?
Yes.
And to what I'm saying, if CAO can't say we've got your three, three billion dollar line of credit, we need to go ahead with the best figures, and probably look local, here are two things to have.
Yeah, we need to know.
Billion dollar line of credit.
Stipulation.
And it may be like, you know, million and five.
That CAO's gonna present, timeframe, we need something.
Yes, that's what we're gonna work on, because me and Bridge has been working on the last year's, the four, five, nine, five, and that's still a whole lot of money, too, that's gonna be.
Our deep projects, and other work to be made out of that.
And that, that may actually come in too before.
We got some of it, she does, the big projects might come in.
That's what I'm saying, so that's why you know exactly how much we're looking at.
Since, since Matt brought that up, you guys are familiar with those projects in your districts, and we need to prioritize them. The only one that I drug out was in Rose District, was Mill Brakes, because it's a bad break, and they need to rest, and if you all will pick out the ones that we need to prioritize, we need to get them out first.
Is that the tree break from twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, Bridge?
I'm familiar with these sites.
That's a new, that's a new, that's a new one.
I'm familiar with them, so I'd say.
That's what he's suggesting, right?
Yeah, I said, we got thirty projects from last year, and severity matters, we cannot afford to do all thirty at once, if we pay, if we try to do all thirty at once, we might go shut the door.
And even Bridge, that we're doing right now, I mean, he's gonna put us in a bind, I mean, now, you got one bridge done.
So we're gonna do four, we're gonna do four, five at a time, and move forward, four or five worse ones, and then work our way down, so.
Yeah, we can't just order them all, I mean.
No, we need that.
Mike ain't got enough money to order them.
So that's what.
You have, you have one on Cedar Bridge Road, but I already fixed it, it was for grills still, I don't care.
And like I said, all the stuff twenty twenty seven. And like I said, a lot of stuff twenty twenty seven, we we did that, you know, but we we got.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So just, you know, it's saying it's just move on with that. We we need money. It's just.
Nigga, that's the bottom of the table. It's like four rock. It's hell. Too close.
So motion is.
Motion is.
Motion is to pay the claims, pass the resolution twenty twenty two, oh nine, oh eight, to get the money to be able to pay the claim of three hundred thousand from in-house transfer from CACO.
Next one. Next one. Motion is second and already.
Yeah, Ray made a motion and Ellis second. Donny Bush?
Yeah.
Royalpen?
Yeah.
Ray Moore?
Yeah.
Ellis Chinger?
Yeah.
Motion, Jerry Reed.
Motion.
Royalpen?
Yeah.
Any more?
Yeah.
Ellis Chinger?
Yeah.
Donny Bush? Now, we're gonna get away.